We'll call the legislative session 2019-06 Wycomico County Council meeting to order from March 19, 2019. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father?
Hallelujah. I will be done, and I will be done on earth as it is known, because this day is our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil, as the kingdom and power of the Lord be praised. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as it is in the world.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from March 5, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertaining motion to approve the work session minutes from February 19, 2019 in reference to the CIP.
So moved.
Second?
I want to make sure I got that right. No, I'm sorry, it was Wycomico County Strategic Plan, yeah. Give me a motion, please.
It's so moved.
Okay, any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertaining motion to approve the work session minutes from February 19 in reference to the capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertaining motion to approve the work session minutes from February 19 in reference to PAC 14.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I think that's the one where Tom Taylor came before us, right?
I don't think so.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Social Work Month. I know Mrs. Jamie Truitt is here. I believe there's--
Uh, Ms. Jamie Truitt is not here. She is effectively ill. I'm Pam Thompson. I'm the social work supervisor for Child Health Center, so I'm here in her place.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, Vice President Dodd's going to present the proclamation at the podium here.
Okay.
If you have anybody with you you'd like to also accept the presentation, feel free.
I do. I have Dr. Jennifer Bowles. She's a Salisbury University social work partner.
So this is proclamation for National Social Work Month. Whereas the social work profession is dedicated to enhancing well-being and helping meet the basic needs of all people, especially those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty, and whereas this year's Social Work Month theme elevates social work, embodies the need to recognize the extraordinary contributions of the profession to our society, and whereas social workers elevate and empower people, giving them the ability to solve problems, cope with personal roadblocks, and get the resources they need to succeed, and whereas the social work profession is deeply weaved into our society with social workers active in government, schools, social service agencies, communities, the military, and in healthcare and mental health settings. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by the social workers in Wycomico County, be it resolved by the Wycomico County Council, that March 2019 is hereby proclaimed National Social Work Month, done this 19th day of March 2019 by the Wycomico County Council.
Thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome to make any comments you'd like. She didn't tell you we were going to be on the spot.
Yes, thank you. I don't know that there's a whole lot to say aside from what was already listed in the proclamation. We appreciate the effort the county has made to recognize us and our contributions to the community. Thank you.
Great, all right.
Well, professors always have a little more to say, so.
That's good.
Um, I just want to say that social workers really are the unsung heroes of our communities. They really are the backbones of the community. They see the good in others. They believe individuals and communities can change. They build up individuals who have been discarded by society, and they change systems to make them more equitable and fair for all people in our communities. And like superheroes, social workers rush into bleak and desperate situations and offer help and support to those who are downtrodden. The School of Social Work at Salisbury University is proud to participate in today's proclamation for March Social Work Month. Having a strong social work program on the shore ensures we have the workforce to help support, educate, intervene, counsel, teach, and organize for a better community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, Ms. Hurley, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is Resolution Number 51-2019, extending the date for the adoption of the capital program from March 19, 2019, to June 4, 2019. Charter Section 704 indicates that the county council is to adopt a capital program as submitted or amended on or before the 3rd Tuesday in February each year. Charter Section 707 allows the county council to change any of the dates in Section 704 by resolution if the resolution states the reason for the change. Resolution Number 46-2019 was adopted on February 19, extending the date for the adoption of the CIP to March 19, 2019. The resolution before council today is to extend the adoption of the capital improvement program for a second time to June 4, 2019, and the reason is that state legislation has been introduced that may have a fiscal impact on the county, and administration has requested to take a look at the projects in the CIP in light of the proposed legislation.
Ladies and gentlemen, entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 51-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the submission of appointments to the Animal Appeal Board, the Wycomico County Airport Commission, and the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Commission, sorry, Committee. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards and commissions, to council for confirmation at a legislative session. The Director of Administration has formally submitted the names of individuals to serve on the Animal Appeals Board, the Airport Commission, and to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee for council's confirmation, starting with Resolution Number 52-2019, confirming the appointment of Sean A. Bradley to the Animal Appeals Board. The Animal Appeals Board hears and decides appeals of determinations made by the Animal Control Authority concerning the classification of an animal as potentially dangerous or dangerous. They also make recommendations on changes, implementation, and administration of the animal laws, and they make recommendations regarding the scheduled fines provided in Chapter 133 of the County Code.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 52-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 53-2019, confirming the reappointment of Matthew E. Kramer to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. The Airport Commission acts in advisory capacity. They review and make recommendations to the airport manager and the county executive with respect to all airport matters.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 53-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 54-2019, confirming the reappointment of Nola M. Arnold to the Wycomico County Airport Commission.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 54-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next for consideration is Resolution Number 55-2019, confirming the appointment of Minister George M. Copeland to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. The Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee was established in 2009 for the purpose of developing a comprehensive GI plan with strategies to implement green infrastructure conservation in Wycomico County.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 55-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for consideration is Resolution Number 56-2019, approving a concession agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, and Centel Robotics Solutions, LLC, to provide unmanned aircraft systems, flight operations at the Salisbury Regional Airport, and we have Dawn Beech, the airport manager, here to answer any questions.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 56-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Speech? Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
I brought the guest.
You know, I've had this government technology for a few months now.
Yes.
Droneville USA, it recommends four areas in the United States, the entire United States, that they recommend for, which is perfect for drone sections, and one of those does happen to be in this exact area, so Alabama, Colorado, Montana, and the greater, like, Washington DC area, which includes Salisbury, Maryland.
Yes, it does.
Anyway, thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Dawn Beech, the airport manager, and I have with me today Peter Bale.
Good morning.
And Peter is the president and CEO of SRS, which is Sentinel Robotics Corporation, so that is who we have our concession agreement with.
Okay, I'll open the floor to you so that you can just give us a brief overview of what you're asking.
All right, we were here in September and did a presentation on the drone operation on September 18 to talk about the concept that we had as far as development, the innovation center, what types of services we would be providing, such as training, development, testing of payloads on other drones for companies that don't have their own drone and things of that nature. This is a concession agreement instead of a lease because SRS is providing as a service, not renting the facility. The facility is being built by the county. There will be office space and other things rented in that facility, but not for this portion of this agreement. So they have the expertise to operate this. They've done this seamlessly with tremendous success. We're fortunate to have a leader in the industry here as our partner, and we look forward to being able to develop all of the new future things that are coming down the road with drones and the aviation community.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this?
When we first started talking about this several months ago, a year ago, it was supposed to be fixed winged drones, was the understanding I was getting from this, and I've had concerns from some of the general aviation aircraft, these people out there that are concerned about the, you know, the--
The vertical lift.
The vertical lifts, and then last week or the week before, there was a news broadcast on those local stations about training to use drones, so is that what's going on?
We're doing all types of drone. My presentation demonstrated that on September 18. There are no drones being excluded. We have runway-type drone equipment that will use the runway. We have vertical lift. We have prescribed departures for ingress egress that protect the operations on the active runways. Those will all be published, and a published chart for all pilots to review and be able to see. There will be nodums, a notice to airmen, that is generated for every pilot that flies. They're supposed to get those before they take off, as well as a local nodum that the tower will advise if the drone activity is currently in operation. So everybody's aware, drones operate typically, the vertical lift would be below 400 feet. Aircraft are not supposed to be below 400 feet inside the five-mile radius of the airport. It's restricted, they're supposed to--
Five miles.
Five miles, so, so, you know, good, you've been doing your homework. And, yes, so, so, anyway, we feel we have a very safe operation, and to couple that, we have drone detection technology that's very advanced that will be coming at the next council meeting. We'll have, I think it's on the agenda for that, to go ahead and get that technology installed so that we can track, monitor all drone equipment that's operating in our airspace and coordinate, of course, with air traffic. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Right. Let me get back to where it was. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 56-2019 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Want to oppose? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Thank you very much for being here. Thanks, Dawn.
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 59-2019, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant from the state of Maryland in the amount $972,684 to modify the Poplar Hill facility for substance use, disorder treatment, and recovery. We have Mr. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration, and guests with us today.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 59-2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Good evening, or good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Could you guys throw the mics around so that everyone has one?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration with Wycomico County. I have with me Steve Schuh, he's the Executive Director of Maryland's Opioid Command Center, and Dr. Barbara Bazaron, she's Deputy Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health and Executive Director of Behavioral Health. So last council meeting, I gave some background on the opioid epidemic and its impacts locally and some of the costs associated with that. I identified a gap in services currently provided locally in terms of there isn't currently a 24/7 ability to provide treatment and detox services to those in need, and I discussed the proposed repurposing of the Poplar Hill pre-release facility into a regional comprehensive substance use treatment facility. We come before you today to accept a grant agreement that's in the amount of $972,684 to begin renovations at the Poplar Hill facility for the treatment to be provided. This is state money, going to renovate a state facility, and with that, I would like to turn it over to Steve to give some statements as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the commission, thank you very much for having us here today to talk about this exciting project. Let me give you a quick background on the Opioid Command Center. The center was established by Governor Hogan early in 2017 at about the same time that it declared a state of emergency because of the epidemic we face related to opiates. That, the responsibilities we were given were to coordinate the statewide response and to lead the overall effort to combat the crisis. And what that means really in practice is that we work with the 24 local jurisdictions around the state to provide resources, to fill in gaps in delivery systems, provide information, everything people need to address the crisis here locally. Maryland, despite immense effort, remains in the midst of an immense crisis. There were over 2,000 fatalities in 2017 related to opiates. That's the last full year we have data. Data's still coming in on 2018, but it is clearly on track for another year to have in excess of 2,000 fatalities. The shore has been especially hard hit. 140 approximately of those fatalities occurred here on the shore, and when you look at matters on a per capita basis, the number of fatalities per 100,000 population is substantially higher here on the shore than it is in the rest of the state. 26 fatalities per 100,000 population on the shore versus 21 fatalities per 100,000 population in the rest of the state. So very concerning to us. Six of the nine shore counties are above the Maryland average in terms of per capita rates of fatalities. So the need for this type of facility is certainly here in this part of Maryland. We're very excited about the Poplar Hill project for several reasons, one of which is it is full spectrum, as you know, starting with observation to detox, to recovery and rehabilitation, or to treatment housing. And that spectrum of services is very consistent with the policy priorities that the governor has set in terms of treatment and recovery. The second reason is that we think it's very exciting to see such a regional cooperative effort by multiple counties, especially in more rural areas part of Maryland, in more rural areas of the state, because rural areas have unique challenges in addressing a crisis like this, and when we see counties coming together to work jointly on a challenge, it tends to be more effective. Also, as you know, this is a repurposing of a state asset that is lying fallow, and it's very cost-effective to put it back to work in a constructive way. And finally, the location looks very good to us, close enough and accessible to everyone in the region, but at the same time, in a lightly populated area. The grant agreement and the lease agreement are as easy as they get. We're trying to make this as easy as possible on the participating counties. They're very standard agreements. The grant agreement, for the most part, just requires the county to provide us with invoices, be non-discriminatory in the process of construction, and to give us approval over major subcontractors, which we would routinely grant. And then the lease itself is pretty straightforward. It's a 20-year base lease, two 5-year renewal options. It's a $1 per year lease, so the financial burden isn't particularly substantial, and the state has agreed to continue to operate the treatment facility that serves the site. So that's the scope of things. We're excited about the project. I want to shout out Lori Brewster and Dave Shipley for their great work. I mentioned to you that mostly what we do at the OOCC is coordinate with local opioid intervention teams at the local level, and your OIT, your opioid intervention team is, of course, led by Lori Brewster and Dave Shipley, and Wycomico has set a very, very high standard of performance, which we appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schuh.
Thank you.
Did you have any comments?
No, I'm just here to respond to any questions that you might have.
Great.
But I would also like to say that we really, the Maryland Department of Health really does support this project because it is filling a gap in services, and it is really needed in this particular area. We have to really curb the number of deaths that are occurring due to the opioid epidemic. We've got to get people into care, and we also have to keep them in recovery, and the spectrum of services that will be offered here will meet that objective.
Thank you very much. I noticed in the breakdown of the funding, there's about 272 for mechanical, and then there's another $500,000 for HVAC, so the balance of that is 200,000, which is for dormitory improvements. Correct. And I was curious as to what those improvements were, what was anticipated, if we have any type of a study that shows or demonstrates what degree of work needs to be done to the facility?
Sure, sure. These estimates are ones that we internally came up with, working with our General Services Division. In terms of getting the facility up and running, and given the grant money being offered, this is how we decided to start things. There isn't cooling out there now, so a large part of that money, over half, is going towards putting in air conditioning units. The mechanical is for plumbing. If you've been out to the facility, the showers are not currently in a situation that, you know, there's no privacy, and it would be upgrading the showers that are there and other plumbing issues. The dormitory improvements, that would be taking what were large dorms, they, as a pre-release unit, they had bunks, they had several bunks, and it would be creating private rooms. So the thought would be, you know, putting in walls and taking what are large dorms and breaking them up into smaller private rooms. Part of that will be, if this grant is accepted, the very next step would be setting a meeting up with the service provider that won the request for qualifications and working with them to see exactly what they need. We would then need to have some architectural sketches done, and then we would need to send them to the appropriate state staff to approve any of that work before we get started. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was wondering what the 200,000 costs were.
Sure, that's taking what are big, open spaces and putting rooms, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, so it's creating the rooms needed for detoxification, for ultimately recovery.
And that sort of configuration is what's typically found when you go into a treatment facility, as opposed to looking at one that used to be a correctional facility. So we have to really retool the environment.
Yeah, well, and that retooling, I mean, you know, I think all of us have probably been out there and have seen it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of retooling that's needed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, $10 million was thrown out in January. Sorry to bring that up again, Weston.
No, no, that was--
But, you know, and it seems that we're almost, I wouldn't say doing anything backwards, but I guess, you know, that's kind of the way it looks because we're accepting this money to start work without a final plan on what, you know, we don't have a plan on what the final facility will look like, how much work will be needed. We're start work, and, you know, it's going to cost more than a million dollars, I think all of us, you know, have been out there, have seen that. And so, you know, I mean, I'm a little bit leery about committing to doing something without, you know, we generally have a process, you know, whether it's a new school or sheriff's department, you know, things like that, where we have a, you know, concept, a cost, then we do plans, and then we, you know, finally start moving approval of the money and things like that. And now we're approving the money first, start moving, and then going from there, you know, I mean--
Sure, sure.
So, you know, the rush of this is a little bit what's, it's got me a little bit of heartburn, so.
No, that's a good point. What I'd like to state is the larger estimate in terms of fully retrofitting the entire complex is going to be far more than a million dollars. We can all agree to that. What we are doing is a combination of, and how this has all been laid out, is we have state money that we're looking to accept here. USDA Rural Development is 100% behind this project, and they're practically throwing money at us, but they want to know what, and I can bring Denise Lovelady up at the next meeting with what's available from them. The thought is we get as much grant money as possible to do renovations. Whatever's required beyond that to get started, and again, we're talking 20 beds, we're talking just men, if we go co-ed, we're going to need separate showers, that's going to be a larger mechanical cost. You know, there's going to be certain dorms we may just cut off at this moment, and we don't plan to renovate at all. So we would get grant money from, in this case, the state. We would get grant money from USDA Rural Development, and then whatever's required beyond that for the provider to get started, it is expected that they will take out low interest loans from USDA Rural Development.
And, you know, you mentioned that last time, but it seems to me that it would be useful to have an idea of how much the cost would be, you know, we get a million from the state, four million from the feds, let's say, and then, you know, that provider would then know, all right, so I have to kick in a million, two million, you know, something like that.
So part of the reason we were before you now talking about this specific grant is, if you look, it's on the very first page of the grant agreement, this money that's available now is good until end of June 2019. So Steve, and he can go into more detail, the Opioid Command Center needs to know, do we plan to use this money this year, or can they repurpose it to one of their other projects they have throughout the state? So I agree with you in terms of the process we normally go through. You know, the, our office is pursuing this, and the way we see forward is grant monies as pass-through, we're purely taking grant monies from state and federal sources. We are renovating to assist the ultimate provider that will go into that facility, and then they will get the rest to renovate. This grant money, if you read through it, it's, as Steve said, it's the simplest, you know, friendliest grant document I've seen, but the string is the time. The red flag, you know, on this document is that it needs to-- The red flag, you know, on this document is that it needs to be spent by June 30th. So that's why we're before you now with this specific ask. If you feel there's not enough information and you vote against this, that money will be repurposed somewhere else in the state to help the opioid epidemic elsewhere, and we will just have to ask, you know, in fiscal '20, if we can get money then.
Also, with respect to service delivery, the Behavioral Health Administration does provide startup funds. The services that are being provided are within the American Society of Addiction Medicine's levels of care, and they are reimbursable through Medicaid. So there is a source of continuous funding, and we will also support some startup funds to make sure that the provider can get up and running effectively and efficiently, because we truly support this project.
I appreciate that. Could I just follow up on the date thing? So we learned two weeks ago that the deadline was March 30th. When did you know the deadline was March 30th?
June 30.
Well, but I mean, we're being asked to approve this by March 30th, you know, yeah, so.
Yeah, we let you know as soon as we knew, that they needed to know by end of March if we were going to move forward with that.
And where that came from, we lose this money if it's not spent by June 30, because of the state's budget cycle. And if, we felt that if we didn't know for sure that you guys were going to take the money by the end of March, if it went much beyond that, we wouldn't have time to find alternative grantees, and we would end up losing the money, because it just takes time for people to find a project, scope it out, and legitimately be able to represent that they can spend the money by June 30. I know that sounds a little bit like we're making our problem your problem, but it would just be, you know, a shame to lose a million dollars to defray the cost of a really good project. And we do recognize that this million dollars is not the end of the cost of this project, that there's a long way to go. We'll be entering our next budget cycle almost immediately. Barbara just shared with me some very good news about federal funding. They're going to be giving us substantially more funding in fiscal '20 than they gave us in fiscal '19. So we look at this as a partnership with you, and it's not, this isn't the last time you're going to see us to be helping out with this project.
Yeah. Weston, last week, two weeks ago, the question was, something about funding, you said it's a good question, and now we're hearing about startup funds that we didn't hear before. Now you're saying the USDA is going to be throwing money at us left and right, but we haven't heard any figure, so it's like putting the cart before the horse, and it's just not a comfortable feeling.
Joe, just, I've got several. Mr. Schuh, back, one of the concerns, several concerns about this, but one of the concerns we've been hearing about is the importing of folks from out of the area. You know, will people be coming from all over the state to this area, and due to the fact that it's state money? And I understand that one of our delegates, Ms. Sample Hughes, asked you that question a few months ago, and you said that it was a practice or probably not allowed under the state law. Is that correct? I mean, will we be moving people from out of the area to this facility?
I don't think so. Given the extent of the epidemic here on the shore, and the size of this facility, starting at 20 beds, eventually hopefully going to 60 beds, I don't think you're going to have any problem filling those beds with your friends and neighbors here on the shore. The way the facility operates as a practical matter is going to be a function of how the county and your vendor, the people you hire to run it for you, choose to run it and to market it. There are providers in Florida, you see them on TV, advertising nationally, because that's their business model. I would assume that if your goal, and we know that's your goal, because that's how we scoped the grant, that it's to serve the residents of the shore, that your marketing will be focused on the residents of the shore, and that we wouldn't expect to see you on Washington DC or Philadelphia market television. And so, as far as an outright prohibition, my understanding is, as you stated right up front, that I don't believe, my understanding is that you cannot have an outright prohibition. And so if somebody does knock on your door from a different part of the state or country, that they would have to have, as the same access that anybody else would have that knocks on your door who happened to live nearby.
So in other words, this provider or vendor, if they take over this facility and they start operating it, and they discover that they can garner more income by taking people, it's not on, was it Medicaid, is that who would pay?
Medicaid as well as state-only funds.
Okay. So if they could garner more income by taking private pay, they would be allowed to take people from anywhere in the state, is that correct?
They would be legally allowed to, but I don't, but they're going to be answerable to you. If that's what you, if what you want them to do is focus their marketing on the shore, that's what they will do.
But if the state funds this, or partially funds this, there's probably nothing that we can do legally to restrict this just to local.
My understanding is you can't have a legal restriction, but we don't have any, we don't have any opinion about your marketing practices and who you recruit into the facility.
The other thing you said a few minutes ago was, a lot of the counties jointly are excited about this. We've never heard anything from anybody else, any other county. In fact, one of the counties I talked to, they said they didn't want anything to do with it, being involved in it. Did you have a list of the people that are?
I don't have a list. My understanding was it was a multi-jurisdictional, that most of the shore counties wanted to be supportive and participants in the project.
Just a comment, but we had Ms. Brewster here, was it last meeting? And she said that Worcester was aware of this, Somerset, and even Caroline had contacted us.
Well, we heard that they were aware, we knew that, but we haven't had any outpouring of, you know, I mean, like you said, everybody was, you know, excited about it. I hadn't heard anything from anybody else, so.
Wayne?
We've had several meetings with all the health officers on the lower shore, all the health officers on the lower shore have signed on to this. Whoever you're talking to may not be aware.
I've been talking to county council people.
May not be aware of what their health officer's doing, because they're state employees. The other thing I would remind all of you of is that there is a bill before the legislature right now that will likely pass, that was signed off on, sponsored by one of our delegates, that will require two female pre-release facilities in this state. We have a pre-release facility sitting there vacant, and if you want a pre-release facility in Wycomico County, so be it, because that's what you're going to get.
Wayne, we had a pre-release.
Thank you.
Center in Wycomico County, and when we had that, they did have guards there, and from my understanding, this center won't have guards, the people will be able to walk away anytime they want to.
Because they're not criminals.
Well, you know, the last meeting, we heard that, you know, there would be people moved from our detention center there, so, you know, and I know you disputed that, I know you disputed that.
You did not hear that, please sit down, Ruth. You did not hear that from anyone with the authority to say that.
Well, we might have knocked on.
Look, this is very simple, this is very simple in my mind. If council doesn't want to accept the million dollars, if council doesn't want to take a progressive step towards addressing a very serious issue in this community, so be it. We're presenting you with an opportunity, if you care not to take advantage of it, so be it.
Wayne, we appreciate what you're saying.
I've got something else, I'm not done with you, John.
Well, just to address that point quickly, we do appreciate that, Wayne, because we appreciate the state's efforts also, but I think you say that, you know, you're telling the council that the council has to make this decision.
Correct.
My concern is that, before we do anything, that over above all, of everything else, this needs to be vetted properly.
I disagree with that.
Yes, we've had one work session as a county council.
Not disagreeing.
We haven't had any public hearings at all in reference to this topic, which is a concern. So I think what the council's trying to get at, it's not us versus them type of thing, we're trying to make sure that the proper process is going to be followed on this, and we certainly don't want to mislead the state.
No, I don't, and John, I don't disagree with that, but there are assertions being made that are sort of outside the lanes of the discussions we've had. I believe in due process, you know that.
Right.
But what I'd like to do is be deliberate about this and stick with the facts as we know them.
Well, again, we've only had one work session.
I understand.
I understand, this is a resolution on the table today.
I understand.
But actually, this is also a work session for this council as well.
I understand that.
So if Joe or any other council member's going to make some type of, I wouldn't even say accusation, I would just say comment of what they know about it, you know, we have to have an open dialogue and an exchange that will help the council members better understand what the circumstances are.
I agree with you, John. I don't disagree with that at all.
Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. The, actually getting back to what Wayne, the comment he just made about, I mean, this is an opportunity, you know, I mean, we hear time and time again about, you know, the epidemic we have here on the shore. You have to start somewhere, and, you know, we don't get to pick the timing, the timing is what it is, and this is just a first step of a pretty significant project, and it is an opportunity. You know, it's an opportunity to do something about a major epidemic we have here on the shore, and, you know, I don't have concerns about opening, you know, this is opening the door for us to pursue this. You know, we still have a lot more steps to take, but you've got to start somewhere. And, you know, and this resolution just allows us to begin the process.
Joe?
The vendor operator, has the state done any background, or the county done any background on them?
Yes, so the vendor currently operates in Maryland now. I believe the warden can comment on the work that.
They're in our detention center now?
Yes.
Yes, so they're providing some level of medical service in our detention center, as well as in other Maryland entities. The facility they operate now, that most, I guess is most similar to what we're proposing at Poplar Hill, is in Harrington, and they provide a comprehensive, almost the exact same square footage as the Poplar Hill facility. Our conversations with them have been, they are familiar with the USDA Rural Development loan process, and so that's ideally what we need in terms of covering the remaining costs of what goes into getting this facility started. Real quick on Larry's comment, I wasn't aware of the money that the Department of Health has, Lori may have, but in terms of laying out, it sounds like those may help operational costs. I've been focusing on taking what was a pre-release jail, prison facility, and converting it into, you know, a friendlier treatment variety, so.
So last, our last meeting two weeks ago, there was comments made that there would be people sent there from our detention center.
Correct.
But I didn't hear that this vendor was working at our detention center two weeks ago. I don't know if I missed that, I didn't read it.
Sure. The talk.
Excuse me, let me interrupt you just a minute. Now it's being said that it was no authority set about, you know, people spoke with no authority that would be moving in that direction, so.
Yeah, as I recall, that conversation went on that tangent when I brought up what, I wanted to try to quantify what some of the expenses are, like, we are paying for this epidemic now. We see it in our detention center. We pay upwards of $200,000 a year treating detoxing folks. That doesn't get into if these folks have also contracted HIV or hepatitis from needle use. Those are in addition to, just in detoxing people in Wycomico County, we are spending almost $200,000 a year. So that's where, you know, the warden further chimed in about that. This, the folks we want to be bringing to this facility are the ones our COAT team find that want to seek treatment, because while they're interested and have that self-determination at that moment to seek treatment, we get them to a facility. Our current provider has limited hours, limited beds, so we're having to send, and I should also mention, except whoever they want now, so it's not restricted to the shore or Maryland, have to drive across the bay to a 24/7 facility now. So what we want, and when we expressed this issue among the health officers, I don't want to speak, Lori can chime in if she wants, but among the health officers, what we heard was, it isn't just Wycomico, it is all the counties. If they find somebody who wants treatment, and the current provider, and I'll say, the council members and commissioners I spoke with, if they had a concern, it was how does this compete with our local provider? That's our question, how does, we don't want to put our local provider out of business, but what we've identified is the gap we're trying to fill isn't met with the current provider. If you go to Somerset, they have McCready. What McCready provides, this isn't going to full, like, again, the demand here is high enough that we think, especially at 20 beds, how we would like to get started, the demand is high, Wycomico can probably keep it filled. But when we heard, and to get state monies as well, we were like, well, let's open it up to the surrounding counties, because they have the same needs we do. You can more easily get treatment 24/7 if you're across the Bay Bridge. This is going to be a very, I mean, even at the max, and I, you know, personally, we may not be able to get 60 beds when it's all said and done, we may only get 40.
Weston, who is the service provider going to be?
So the service, well, depending on how things go, the service provider that was, that from the request for qualifications is called Connections, and, you know, if you'd like to hear what they're currently doing in our correctional facility, Warden Coburn.
Are they a local organization, or are they?
They're out of Delaware primarily, although they have expanded into Maryland significantly.
Okay. So we've been mess, excuse me, I'll use another word instead of messing, we've been discussing this for six months, eight months, but we've never had a public hearing on it. You know, now we're down to the wire of approving something that's going into a neighborhood that I've heard concerns from citizens about, what's going there, but there's never been an attempt to have a public hearing about having.
I understand that. Did you attend the community forums they had on the opioid? Because that's where the idea and, you know.
Yeah, but that's not the people, that's people that affect on one side, that's not the people it's going to affect in the neighborhood and where the people live. You know, my concern is, and the concern from what I'm hearing from people that live in that area, is what's to keep the people from walking away? What's to keep them there? And then you say it's voluntary, they can walk away anytime they want. And then we hear that there might be people sent down there with ankle bracelets, you know? We hear now that the operator is also working in our detention center, so is this going to be a clearinghouse for the detention center? I can't, I'm done with it, I'm sorry.
Well, I think part of the issue is, is that there's a lot of questions out there, and, you know, it's in my district, so I hear those questions, I don't have any answers, and that's part of the, you know, that's part of what we're asking here, because we don't have the answers, and that's why I think a lot of us, there's some of us I know on this side of the table that are opposed to it. I'm more ambivalent, I don't like to be rushed, and I feel like we're being rushed. But, you know, the people out there, you know, they said that they want to know more about this, and they, you know, and they called me up, I said, I don't know, you know, we haven't, you know, this is before our work session last week, you know, or last time. So I think part of the issue is, is that there's not a lot of information out there, that people have these questions, and they express them to Joe, and they express them to me and probably others, and that, you know, they're not, their fears aren't being calmed with information, and our questions haven't been answered, you know, with what this will be totally, and all that sort of stuff. You know, and part of the issue is that I've had, that hasn't really been addressed well, and I can ask you this to Mr. Schuh, is if we're accepting state money to work on a state facility, why do you need Wycomico County as a middleman? I give the county executive credit for bringing this up as an issue and identifying the need, you know, with, you know, there's a great state facility here, but I'm not sure why we need to be the middleman for, it's state money, state facility, if, you know, I mean, you know, it seemed like you would have the ability right now with the opioid command center to take that money and immediately start work there to open something like this up without us, you know, I mean, frankly, we're slowing the process down here, you know, if there needs to be a state opioid facility there.
We generally do not act as a direct provider of services. We work with the local jurisdictions and other local entities to deliver services through the grant-making process, and in this case, with a companion lease that gives you control, gives the local control over the facility. So this is consistent with our statewide strategy of working with local jurisdictions to deliver local services.
Well, I mean, and we're not a provider of services, I mean, this is not something that, I mean, do other counties have run these sort of facilities, or is this sort of a unique sort of thing?
Maybe Barbara has.
We've told her that's not it.
You know, maybe. Uh, maybe Barbara has, you know, more, more, a bigger picture of it, but this is, this is typically what we do. We, we make grants very often to local health authorities, and then local health authorities will contract with outpatient providers or residential providers or detox facilities to, to actually deliver the services. Most local jurisdictions don't themselves literally deliver the services, they contract with people to deliver services.
And I can tell you that what my office does is we provide funding to the local addiction authorities, the local health departments, and the local behavioral health authorities, and of course, service agencies. So that's at the jurisdictional level. And then they are responsible for doing the contracting and overseeing the network of care so that it's specific to that jurisdiction. So that's our process, and we, we do that as a part of our mission.
Joe?
I was just going to jump in and say, Director Schu, first of all, thank you for, I know I spent a lot of time listening to WRNR radio and your, your commercials that kept coming on, making this an issue for the last, what, three years or so. That was really very helpful, and I think I'm getting a lot of folks addressing it to know that there really is an issue.
Thank you.
Uh, but could you give us an understanding as far as, is this, this request for this amount of money, or this, this potential grant, is this something that's more extraordinary for this year, or, and does the governor's office, how, do you expect them to have a continued commitment over the coming years of this quality? I guess what I'm getting at is to try to understand where the state's commitment to potential resources like this in the future.
Yeah, as I mentioned, this is a, a major priority for our office and, and for the governor. We have, this, this funding is coming out of a $10 million pot. So th- this is 10% of our total dollars available for grant-making throughout the whole state. So this is, yes, this is unusual, this is a big deal to us. We're, we're trying to really put shoulder to wheel on this project. And, um, and, and we are going to have even more funding available next year than we have had this year, thanks to the federal actions that have been taken of late. And, and this is going to continue, this project is going to continue to be a priority for our office, the Department of Health, I'm certain, and for the governor. So I, I can't make any promises today about a future grant application, but I, I can say certainly that everyone that is directly involved in this is going to look very favorably on any future grant requests you make to continue to build out this facility.
Ernie, your question?
Um, don't get me wrong, I understand we have a big problem here with opioids, but my problem is with the operation, I'm like with Mark. If the provider is going to fund this thing and keep it going, why is the county getting involved? And just like the doctor just said, they give their money to the state facilities, the state health department, so that's where their money's going. So again, why are the county, why are we getting involved in it if the money's going to come from the county?
Well, the county's role is, is, is essentially to monitor the, the project, its effectiveness, and to make sure the grant funds are spent as they're supposed to be. That's why we, we try to work with local authorities, because my office doesn't have the capacity, once we, once that million dollars has come over to, you know, this, to the shore here for this project, we don't have an ongoing capability of, of watching over it. And your, your local health department does, I mean, that's what they routinely do.
But that, that's, that's million dollars is for construction.
Right.
On top of operation. No one is talking about operation of this place, where the money could come to operate it.
It was, it was mentioned at the last meeting by, by Lori that it's, uh, you know, funded through-
Yeah, I can-
Private funding and, is it Medicare?
Yeah, I can speak to that. The, the services, as I said earlier, that are being provided are funded through Medicaid and, through our 1115 waiver, which we have gotten from the Center for Medicaid and Services, CMS, at the federal level. And so that's ongoing available funding on the fee-for-service system. And then in addition to that, for those individuals who are uninsured, then we provide state-only dollars out of my budget to support that. So in terms of the ability to fund ongoing service delivery, the, the Behavioral Health Administration really provides that kind of support and safety net moving forward.
So that money would go right to the provider?
It, the provider will bill, because it's a fee-for-service system, and so they will bill for the services rendered. So if somebody comes in and they need outpatient detox, there is a code for that, and they would bill that code through, through Medicaid and through our administrative services organization, and then they would get the reimbursement.
So I, I recently looked at national statistics that, actually Barbara's office was kind enough to provide to me. Nationally, about 40% of these types of services are paid for by Medicaid, about 10% by Medicare, and the other 50% a combination of private insurance and straight out of pocket and some charity care. And we, we don't have this, this, those numbers specifically of Maryland, but it probably looks pretty much, pretty much like that.
In fact, I got a question behind you. The information that we had, I think of those grants, I think we're the largest recipient, if I remember right. We had a list of all the recipients, and I don't think anyone was receiving-
Most of these grants are between 50 and $150,000.
Right, right.
Yeah, this is a, this is a big, this is a big deal for us.
Which is, which, you know, to me, you know, I appreciate the commitment that you are willing to make. And, you know, I don't want us to lose the, the big picture here, this problem we've got with this epidemic. You know, this is an opportunity to deal with this on the shore. You know, we've had our health people here, we've had our detention people here, you know, this is a major cost and a major burden to our detention center and to our hospital. And, you know, I, I know, I think, you know, the questions, concerns are very understandable, but at the same time, we're, we're getting a lot of information as this moves along, and this is a first step of this process. You know, we have, that, that facility's there. You know, we got a choice. It can be used for something that's going to help us here on the lower shore, or it's, you know, it's going to end up being another pre-release center again. And so, you know, it's, something's going to happen to that facility, it's not going to sit there vacant forever. But this is, you know, an opportunity to use that facility. So I don't want, I don't want to see us get in the way of progress here.
Mark?
Um, I mean, we, I think we all recognize that we do have an issue with opioids here in Wycomico County and across the shore and across the state, and, and we don't want to get in the way. But we can't all, there's also, you know, kind of a fallacy of, you know, we need to do something, this is something, therefore we must do this. We need to not just jump at everything because it, you know, because it's presented as an opportunity. And, you know, I've been wrestling with this over the past, you know, two weeks since we found out we're going to need to make a decision today. And I've been thinking about Conley Mill a lot, you know, because, you know, first, you know, the, I mean, the Conley Mill process was a pretty painful process, I know Weston, so, but, you know, at first we had a lot of objections.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bolting spot.
Yeah, yeah, hey, man, I'm not, I'm not the only one. But, uh, you know, you know, we had a lot of objections, we rejected it at first, and then we all worked together and met those objections, and, you know, we ended up, you know, the objections were met and we passed it because, you know, again, I think, for me at least, and some others maybe on the council, when we're back against the wall and feel like being rushed into something with that information, we're not going to approve it. But if we can work in a collaborative process and have the community work in a collaborative process, there may be a way to do this. I'm not, I'm not, I'll be, I'll be honest, I'm not ready to approve this grant yet. I'll put my cards on the table. I do think something needs to be done, and I'm open to something being done at Poplar Hill, but there's too many questions that I have and too many questions the community has, in my district especially, to rush into this. And I don't want to be in the way of progress, but I also don't think that we should get involved in something that could turn out to be, you know, we could start work and, you know, you know, nothing would happen. I mean, I mean, the lease isn't even approved yet, you know, there's, that's still going back and forth. I mean, you know, we don't have a, from the counties, and we don't know our exposure yet on multiple fronts. And so, you know, I'm not, you know, trying to straddle the fence here, even though that may be what it seems, but I, I'm truly ambivalent about this, and I don't like being rushed into anything, and I don't like having the March 30 deadline put on. So, um, you know, my inclination would be to, you know, maybe not reject this, but table it and move on. I'm not making that motion yet, because I know that's not debatable, but that's, that's where I'm, that, that's my inclination to go, I mean, I, I, you know, I like to be cautious, I like to have all the, you know, I like to move slow, and I feel like we're being rushed, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. So that's, that's, that's where I am.
So, so with that, what we, we, what we could do if this money is not accepted now is we could apply in FY '20 and try to get money at that point. That gives us time to work on the lease. Um, you know, again, I don't think anybody likes the rush. And if it wasn't such an easy grant agreement, um, you know, we would probably have questions and concerns about, you know, what, what we're having to follow to spend the money and so forth.
I think that, um, oh, well, good, but I think, you know, Councilman McCain talked about the big picture. I think, again, I would reemphasize, I think the big picture really is the public. Not the county council, it's the public. And I certainly would like to see this vetted with the public so that we know where we stand, because those are the individuals that are going to be impacted by this. Can I ask Mr. President when your next meeting is? Uh, next meeting is April-
April 2nd.
April 2nd. April 2nd. The, um, the, I mean, I, I hear loud and clear what everybody's communicating here. If, if, if some of you, it sounds like, are, are on the fence, and if we could knock out some of these issues that have been put on the table today over the next couple of weeks, that we might have support for the project. So I would be happy to make myself available over the next week and a half to visit with the residents of the community that are affected by this. The March 30 deadline was something we set in our best judgment to give ourselves enough time to repurpose. If we push it into the first week of April, I don't think anybody's going to lose a lot of sleep over that. And, and if we could revisit this after those questions get answered on April 2nd, maybe we, maybe we get over the goal line.
With all due respect, I don't think two weeks is going to be enough to give us that information to fall on one side of the fence or the other.
Gotcha.
This is like thrown in our lap at the last minute, and it's difficult to subscribe, subscribe to making a deal under pressure. And it, it's very hard to do that because we're looking at the taxpayers, the citizens, we've got to think about them. And I've been hearing that people on the west side don't want this facility in their backyard. And they didn't mention the pre-release for the ladies, but they don't want the opioid command center there.
Yeah, actually, I disagree with that. I've had two or three individuals contact me from the west side, you know, very much in favor of this, but besides that, I, you know, I think it's very admirable, your, your suggestion to, you know, there's a lot of questions, you're saying you're willing to get, get these questions answered. I mean, we can't ask for any more than that. And just like some of the other things, we said, you know, over time, we were able to get things resolved. So this will give us two weeks to, you know, dig on this deeper, just to say today, we're not going to do this, you know, when you're offering to push back that deadline and give us, you know, a chance of answering the questions you've heard today. You just heard these questions today. So now you, you know, you're willing to give us ample time to respond back. So with that said, uh, Mr. President, you know, we'd like to see us table it at least until the next meeting. There's no harm, no foul.
We already have a motion on the table. No, there is no motion. There's a motion table, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to, um, put a caveat on that. I'd like to, I would, Councilman McCain, I'd like to table that until the 16th, because if we're going to have a public hearing, I would guess it would have to be advertised. Two weeks is not going to even give us time to advertise it properly.
Like I said, you know-
If you would be willing to accept that.
Can you all keep, keep the doors open until the 16th?
What?
I think so.
Okay. You have a motion?
Right, so I'd, I'd make that motion, you know, to, to table this until the 16th.
16th, second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Discussion, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, and resolution has been tabled until April 16th.
Thank you.
Director Schu, I'd like to make a comment if I could. Yes, sir. I really appreciate the fact, it was a year ago, we really appreciate the work you did as county executive of Anarondo County. And unsolicited, you sent me the entire opioid intervention program that Anarondo County had, everything, from soup to nuts, so that we could look at that. And I distributed that in Wycomico County. I would like to know that, I thank you very much for doing that.
Well, thank you.
And you're doing great work, and we do appreciate that.
Well, thanks for your attention on this issue.
Thank you. Dr. Bowser, thank you for being here.
Oh, certainly. Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you again, Weston.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Earl. Mr. Taylor?
Good morning. Got one legislative bill, 2019-01, introduced today by the council president. It's an act to amend Chapter 141 of the Wycomico County Code titled Fees, Section 141-2 titled Dogs, to include a breeder's, breeder license and administrative fee, and to update the county code cross-reference sections for rabies vaccination, rabies tags, and dog licenses. Just a quick comment, this is basically housekeeping. The fees that are recited for everything except the breeder's license are the same fees as currently are in force. The reason that the breeder's license is inserted, and that is new, is because in our revision of the animal ordinance last year, we included a breeder's license with the fees to be set by the council. You'll also notice in there the cross-references to the sections of the new animal ordinance are, are changed somewhat from the old. That's the housekeeping part of it, and that's the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I entertain a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2019-01. So moved. Second? Any discussion? Seeing, we'll do roll call. All those in favor will say aye, starting with Councilman McCain.
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Press President Dodd?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative bill 2019-01 passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. President, just a point of clarification, this bill is for introduction today.
Aye, okay.
And we can have that public hearing, which is the next step, on April the 16th at 10:00 AM.
All right, then I guess the record can reflect that.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Good morning, Mr. Roser, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call your attention to Resolution 57-2019 concerning the solid waste inventory review.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 59-2019. So moved. Second? Discussion?
If I may. The auditors performed a scheduled review of solid waste inventory controls and procedures. We coordinated with PKS, our external auditors, in the process. The objectives were to evaluate controls and adherence to controls. In the process, we mapped the procedures and evaluated all the controls. Conclusion was satisfactory, which is the highest rating on our familiar three-point scale. And I think that public works personnel should be commended for the successful conversion to a new, more robust system of tracking inventory. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Any questions from council? We appreciate the work, pictures and all, Mr. Roser? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All those in favor of Resolution 57-2019 say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next for your consideration, I call your attention to Resolution 58-2019, amending the annual audit plan.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 58-2019. So moved. Second? Discussion, Mr. Roser?
The auditors were asked to perform a cost-benefit analysis for automobile leases. We determined that a simple present value analysis of lease payments compared to retail purchasing price would likely not paint a complete picture. So, we therefore recommend the addition of the attached scope and objectives to our annual audit plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Any questions from council?
I think it'd be good to, I mean, if we're going to get into these sort of agreements, it'd be good to know what we're getting into and what the savings are.
My understanding, they're not even using the fuel rings anymore on the, on the new leased vehicles. Is that correct?
We, we have not done any work pursuant to this audit, to this point. I, I do not, we haven't done any work on the fuel system recently. We have on our schedule a follow-up of the fuel system, in which we would like to understand the new proposed WIC system that, that some of the departments are using. We're waiting for implementation to the point where it can generate some statistical data, so that we will have something to analyze there. The main thing we're going to look at when we, when we start taking a look at this system, to see how it works, is the internal controls, and we'll compare the internal controls for the new system to the ones in the existing system, which are the fuel rings that you mentioned. But that's a separate project, and, and it's, it's not a back burner, we're just waiting for data.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 58, 2019, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Roser. We appreciate you adding that to your schedule. At this time, excuse me, at this time, we open the floor for any public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none. That concludes our public comments. Council comments?
Joe?
Yep. I was reminded by Reverend Orrin Perdue this morning to be sure and mention that April 6 is plow days, and everybody on the council is invited, so, and general public, it's free. There's a, a lot to see there. It's usually a nice day, for the most part, so be sure and get, check it out. It's on Mount Herman Road, near Airport, right?
Any other council?
Yes, Laura. Yes, um, last week, Laura Hurley and I attended a joint hearing in Annapolis on the current commission. They were about an hour and a half late, and we had to leave, but we did get to hear part of it. It was very interesting. Wish we could have been there the entire time. And after that, I attended the open house and ribbon cutting at the Delmar Ashore Birds, and, and Councilman Hastings and President Cannon ended up coming there right after the ribbon cutting. It was good to see them there. It was a great turnout, and the facility looks awesome. And was it April 11th, I think, is the first game? This past Saturday, most of the council members attended the Wycomico County Farm Bureau's 89th Annual Banquet in Sharp Town, and it was a big event, too. And also upcoming events, I got an invitation for the Fruitland Chamber of Commerce Easter Parade, April 6. And I was asked to extend the invitation to all the council members. So, anybody that's interested, let me know, and I'll get you registered. And I think everyone's got one coming up that same day, and I'll let Councilmen.
They've got lots of.
And that's all I have right now.
Any other council comments?
Same day, isn't it?
Presidential comments, I would recognize Wycomico County Board of Education member, John Palmer, and of course, our illustrious Sheriff, Mike Lewis, is in the audience today. We appreciate that.
Illustrious.
Thank you very much. Sheriff, it was, it was very good to see you in the White House. Whether you like this president, or whether you don't like this president, the fact that we have a Wycomico County Sheriff in the Oval Office with the President of the United States, we really appreciate your representation for this county.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Thank you. Entertained a motion from council to adjourn. Okay, here we, hold on a second. No, you're not ready yet. We have, we have.
Forgot about that paragraph.
Two pages.
Why would you assume you're like the president?
He's doing a great job.
Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions to discuss aspects of the operations of the Wycomico County Narcotics Task Force the council hereby finds would constitute a risk to the public, or to public security of disgust in public session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305 B10, and to consult with legal counsel to determine legal position on charter provisions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305 B7. That's it.
So moved.
Seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. And the first item, actually, we are going to go into closed session before we meet with Board of Education at 1:00. I'm sorry, no, hang on a second. We had to run the Wycomico County strategic plan. Sorry, guys, a little bit out of sorts here.
Hey, Ernie was stepping up. He was speaking up.
Ernie's got it? Okay, good. I'm going to give the floor to you, Councilman McCain. We give the floor to you, since this is your initiative, and.
Yeah, we'll make, yeah, we'll make this pretty quick. Want me to go ahead?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The, you know, we have presented the strategic plan previously, and, you know, kind of went through the process, how it came about, and the different goals and objectives and strategies and so forth. And we, and at the end, we asked for feedback from individuals and on the council, as well as people also involved in government, in the executive office, and some other folks as well. We got some very good feedback. We've tried to incorporate into this semifinal draft all the comments that have been made regarding the strategic plan. We basically didn't really delete anything, for the most part, it's more adding what people said they'd like to see within the plan. Some of it's just, some of it's just simple verbiage. I'm not going to go through necessarily step by step, and you all have it, you know, you can, you can read it, but Ms. Hurley's highlighted in yellow everything that's different from before. And particularly some of the earlier stuff you'll see, it's just, you know, we've just added words, like in some of the strategies there, you know, the term effective, and things like timely. We, we just felt that was important. Some of the things I do want to comment on, as I flip through this, yeah, like, and, just so you can follow where I am here.
Page four.
Yeah, you know, page four, the, we had added there, when we were talking about purchasing goods and services and so forth, we thought it was important to make sure that, I think originally it just said lowest-cost goods, so we've added to that best value and being responsible and efficient. Yeah, because it's just not necessarily lowest cost, you want to make sure it's, we're getting our best bang for the buck, so.
The last three or four times we've approved any purchases, they come in with one vendor. I mean, it seems to be moving away from the purchasing process more so than.
Well, and, and, you know, and that could be a good point, where, you know, something like this might bring that, you know, to the surface, where, you know, maybe, yeah, we, we need to make sure we've got, you know, that additional vendor in there, so, or some kind of guarantee we are getting the best value, because that, you know, because that is part of our plan. We also, Weston had commented and helped us out on some things regarding sewer, some of the things that were in process there, and about our airport, made a few little changes there. We also made sure, and I can't remember necessarily who made the comments on some of these things that we added, but somebody from the council was making, you know, wanted to make sure we had ferries included. Originally, we didn't have ferries included in some of the transportation and public works section there regarding our infrastructure. So, we made sure we got the ferries involved in that, as well as We had a, quite a bit here at the end, so I want to sort of get to that, because we added some new, a couple of new sections. And on the schools, before we get to the end there, school climate and safety was, you know, is a big issue, and there was some comments about that from the council. So, we've added there to provide support for safe and positive school environment, you know, to make sure that got incorporated. And we also under performance measures, still trying to, you know, come up with some good performance measures to measure where we are, but the star ratings is one of the more contemporary ones now. So, we added that in there. Underneath, you'll see there in goal I, which is on page nine, that's all new, but that has to do with economic growth and development in the, in the county. Dave Ryan, we, we were sort of waiting, we were waiting for some feedback from Dave. Dave gave us some really positive feedback, so we tried to incorporate a lot of the feedback regarding, you know, attracting businesses and growing business and retaining businesses here in our county. You know, in fact, if, if you have a business, a lot of times, the best way to grow your business is retaining who you have. And same thing with our county, you know, retaining our employers is one of the best ways to keep our economy strong, and as well as trying to attract new, new businesses. So, anyhow, there's a lot, a lot of verbiage there about encouraging and attracting and collaborating to attract new business. And so, that was added. And then also, goal J, I mean, our biggest industry in our counties is agriculture. And, you know, getting back to Larry's point about the ag dinner, you know, I thought he made a good point, and it was noted at that dinner that six out of seven, John had noted when he made his comments, you know, we almost had our entire council there.
My car was driven down.
Yeah, our, our, our only ag guy didn't make it, but he tried to get there, and so.
He did.
Yeah, right. He did try, right. Yeah, yeah. But, but, you know, as John said, you know, I just, you know, it's, it's hard to think of any event, you know, that we have basically 100% participation. You know, everybody has different schedules, but everybody made it a priority to be there. So, ag is obviously very important, so we added that. We felt that deserved a separate section to itself, and of course, we want to promote and protect and also expand our ag districts, and, and things like our conservation districts, like our rural legacy districts, which actually our Natural Resource Advisory Committee worked a lot in last year to add to that rural legacy district, which, which has been done. So, so that's kind of the, the gist of it. You know, you know, we can still take comments and so forth, but what we'd like to do is sort of ask the permission of the council to finalize this, make this a final version, to submit to the executive office, for them to adopt and post on the website, you know, for everyone to see, and, you know, basically adopt this as our strategic, our long-term strategic plan.
Any questions from the council or comments on this? I, I like the fact that, yes, that the economic development's in here now. I think that's a huge priority, and, and what you've mentioned, what you've noted in ag. And it's funny, because while I was initially going through it, I was saying, wait a minute, that's not a, that's not really a council role. This isn't really the council's role, one thing. And then I, I realized, no, this isn't really necessarily council objective, this is a county objective.
This is county, is that right?
Yes, this is a combination, and I am certain, at least I would hope that the executive branch would appreciate the fact that you have taken the time that you have to develop the strategic plan. Because, as you said before, it is important to, and it's important for the public to look at it, the public to say, hey, this is what our county is, is doing. This is what we're attempting to do.
Right, these are our goals and objectives, so.
It crystallizes it for everybody. So, I do appreciate that bill, and I, as you said, it's a, it's a document that can be changed, however we might choose to do so, but.
But we're probably already doing all this stuff.
But again, to have it, to have it in written form, it really gives, it gives the public an idea of where we're headed.
You know, all these, everything we do is, you know, based around what's here. I don't, I mean, I don't see a problem with putting it all on paper, but I'm just wondering.
But, but actually, Joe, that's a good point, because that's actually a good thing for them. They can see now. You know, they, because they don't know, you know, a lot of times, they don't know everything that we're doing and that are in process. So, you know, it can serve, it can serve that purpose as well, you know, to educate the public.
The problem is, is when you put some of these things in here, and then you do something that actively works against what's in here. You know, actively comes up, like a few years ago, we had the, the downzoning, the issue that came up, where we were trying, you know, council pushed down zone land. I mean, that's basically against what this says. So, what happens when, and I can't pick out either one thing, but what happens when you have something in the strategic plan, and the county executive or the county council comes out and says, well, we want to do just the opposite. I mean, does somebody use this, use this plan against that idea?
No, that, that's, that's why you have a plan, you know, because if, if we are doing something that's opposite of what we're saying in our plan, then we, you know, we need some rationale as to, well, what's changed, you know, or what's, why do we think we should be doing something different? So, you know, that's, you know, plans will change, you know, and particularly when you're in government, because, I mean, state legislator can't, legislation could enact something tomorrow that causes us to have to reverse on something that might be in our plan. But that's, that's an explanation, that's a reason why. So, you know, it doesn't mean, once again, you know, it's, it's a, it's a plan, it's a roadmap, and will you diverge from that on occasion? Sure.
Isn't that what we do with our comp plan? I mean, do we, how many plans do we need? Do we have a comp plan?
He's done the work for you, Joe. He's done the work for you.
I mean, you know, how many plans do you live by?
Well, you know, to be clear.
I'm not criticizing you for doing it, because I'm, I'm just wondering, how many plans do we, do we live by?
Well, but it, but it.
We have our charter, we have our code, we have our comp plan, now we've got a strategic plan. I mean, how, how many plans?
And really, well, really, your strategic plan, which is the irony of that, we were working on plans like that without a strategic plan. And it shouldn't have been the other way around. We should have always had the strategic plan, and making sure our comp plan fit into our strategic plan.
I think this is, the purpose of this is every once in a while, you can go back and go, so what are we, what are we, what are we doing here? And then you, you go, oh, you know, we really haven't been paying attention to economic development like we had initially wanted to do. You know, we've done this educational stuff, we've done a little bit with ag, but you know, maybe we haven't done enough in economic development. I think it's just a, you know, gives you a few reminders as to where you're headed.
Well, and that, and that's the reason, at the end of each of those goals, there's the performance measures. So, you can go back and see, you know, are we accomplishing what we're saying we're trying to accomplish? You know, we may be, we may, we may not be. I mean, you'll be surprised sometimes, when you go back and look at these, you know, it's, well, we're not actually doing that. You know, even though we might think we are, but you know, that's the purpose of this, is to give you some, something to go back to, you know, to, to keep reinforcing whether you're doing your, your, your job or not.
And, yes.
I was just saying, to be clear, of course, this is not a legal document. A lot of the comp plans have been used in court cases. Those are legitimate legal documents. This would just be a more aspirational, I suppose.
Any other suggestions on that?
There's voting on it to prove it, make it a legal document.
No, we just take a consensus to, to pass it to the executive branch and, you know, let them.
Let them take it from there.
Let them take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Weston needs more to do.
Any, any other suggestions, recommendations? Ms. Hurley, thank you for your additions.
Yeah, yeah, I can't emphasize enough the assistance Ms. Hurley's given. And I want to thank, you know, I mean, just about every single council member gave some kind of input on this, you know, and the executive office did too. So, you know, that was very much appreciated.
Right. Ms. Hurley's done a lot of work, so she should be commended. I appreciate that.
No, but she, she's, she's great.
She should not go unrecognized. I think it should say prepared for the Wycomico County Executive, Wycomico County Council, by Mrs. Hurley.
Or at least, and.
Take a consensus from council. Everybody, everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
Bob, we good?
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate the work. The next item we have on the agenda, we will now be going into closed work session. Correct? No motion or rating necessary, because we've already done all that. Am I correct?
You already did, yes.
Okay, so if we could, please, those that are not specifically involved with the closed work session, we would have to ask you to excuse yourselves, so that we can finish the day's work here.